Since some of you don't know me, I am in the last two months of my 16 years serving on the board and I'm not in the reverie election, so this is the end of my tenure as a school board member, so now I'm going to tell stories. And then I'm going to pass on the Queen Bee crown to Ms. Dinter. Having served on the board for 16 years, there's a lot of things that were memorable to me at memorable board meetings, but I will tell you that the most memorable board meeting that I've ever had, it doesn't necessarily mean in a good way, was a day that started off very much like today. It's the second Tuesday in September. It was a beautiful day outside. I was watching the Today Show, as I often do when I'm getting ready in the morning, and heard the tutor chatter about there's some smoke coming out of something over there at the World Trade Center. And that was the beginning of September 11th, 2001. And as the day progressed, as most of us did, that we're frozen in space and time, not knowing what was going to happen, we began to wonder, what would we do as a government entity, as a public board? We had a meeting scheduled that day. We didn't know what to do. We didn't know if we had a country where we're going to attack, and it was very distressing. So, we met as required, because a lot requires us when we advertise to come, and we immediately decided to postpone the meeting until the following day, hoping that at least we would know what was going on and respect for what was happening. But there's a lot of things that happened that day that, over the last 16 years, have made me reflect on what public service is all about. And part of it is that, as elected people, we are elected by people who trust us, who trust us to represent our community, but to also make good decisions, to also be responsive and be responsible, in a small, local way, like the school board or city council, and all the way to Congress and the President of the United States. And I think we learned on September 11th, the sanctity and security of our country was secure, that we had a very real sense of the importance of our freedoms, as all of us hung big flags anywhere we could, and stayed for, what, a year or so? And life continued, and we survived. It was very personal to me that day, as it was Ginger was here and Sam was a school board member, because we came face-to-face with sometimes a crisis that you don't expect, and how do you respond? And what do you do about it? And what is the responsibilities that go along with it, to our children, to our community, and to our country as a whole? So, I think my main thing that I got out of it is what we do matters, and how we respond matters, and how we react matters. It sets a tone, and it either calms fears, or it elevates the fears. And I think one of the lasting legacies I hope that I could pass on to my fellow board members and our new board members is that working together as a team is probably the most essential thing that we can do as elected officials, that we have to put aside our list of grievances, our politics, our own personal beliefs, and work together as a team for the betterment of the people that we serve. And so I hope that is a lesson. I learned it by sitting here, but that was a lesson that was embroiled in me forever because of the experience of September 11th. The other thing that's kind of been, it's not interesting, but this is a picture of my son. And if anybody knows him, he usually has a gigantic grin. Well, on September 11th, at 10:00 a.m., he got called out of his class, after they were all watching what was happening on TV, to have his senior yearbook taken, because he missed it during the summer. And no matter what was happening, they kept taking pictures. And they wanted him to smile, he said no. They wanted him to change his clothes, he said no. So every time I look at this picture with his crypt clenched jaw and his steely eyes, I remember what he was witnessing as a young person happening to his country that day, not knowing what was going to be at the end of the afternoon for all of us. So, different remnants we all have of that day, but that's what I carry with me, and I just want to share that with you. The President has, as has the last couple of years, requested that we all have a moment of silence in honor of Patriots' Day, that is now called September 11th, so if you'll all stand with me, we'll do it two days early. It's our only opportunity to do that together as a group.
... To the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as far.
Thank you, Ms. Deutschman. Ms. Deutschman mentioned, and I want to congratulate Ms. Powers, Ms. Valford, and out in the audience, whereas we have the new honorable School Board-elect Doug Dodd, who will be joining us.
And Mr. Kennedy.
And thank you. And we don't get to have to say goodbye to you for a little while, so we're going to be glad, because...
So I have other stories.
Good, because there's going to be lots of times and opportunities, so we're glad. We kind of have everybody right now, so that's great. Adoption of the agenda as recommended by the Superintendent. Motion, please.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Valford.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five-zero. Citizens comments on anything on the agenda. I believe we don't have anyone for the agenda? Okay. There'll be a second opportunity at 5:45. I'm sorry, approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve the consent
agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five-zero. And we have recognition of Walter Russell Cook on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the school board, citizens superintendent Mr. Blocker, and school attorney Mr. Bradshaw. Again, I bring you those clapping hands, those celebrations and recognition. Get them out, get them out. Thank you. I'm going to ask the board a question. It's an easy question. What do these folks have in common? James Lovell, naval pilot, and as you know, astronaut in the famous Apollo 13 movie; Michael Moore, author and filmmaker; John Tesh, TV celebrity and pianist; Steven Spielberg, movie producer, and of course, my favorite, Michael Rowe, star of Dirty Jobs. What do they all have in common?
You have to see, they're all Eagle Scouts.
Thank you, Ms. Deutschman, yes, they are all Eagle Scouts. Well, I am excited. I brought to you before the criteria for Eagle Scout, the wonderful opportunities that these students get. I bring to you Walter Russell Cook. And Walter Russell Cook is a Centrist High School graduate of 2014, and he actually had his award at the end of last year, so we bring Walter to you, so I'm going to ask Walter to come up. I'm particularly excited about Walter, because though I don't know Walter personally, I do know his mom and dad. Angie, who is a former student of mine, and then Mitch. I worked with Mitch over at Inverness Middle School as the school resource officer, and just wonderful, wonderful parents. So Walter is going to share with you, again, as we do, his project and service project for Eagle Scout. Okay?
All right, so Amay built, in the Whispering Heights Park primitive camping area, Amay, basically, I built a firing among all the three surrounding benches. And I had tried to take a lot too much prior to that fundraising kind of, and I asked my surrounding family members to donate money, and they said sure. And I built it with, I mean, I built it with my troop, and I think that the benches would probably survive for about 30, for probably about 30 to 45 years, and the firing for probably about 15 to, for probably about 15 to 20 years. And I brought my family, along with one of my grandparents.
Could you introduce them?
Sure.
It's the benefit to embarrass them.
Of course. My, of course, I brought my sister Julie Cook, my mom, Maywell Cook, my father Mitch Cook, my grandfather, I was supposed to call him Pat Cook, Charlie Cook, sorry, Charlie, Charlie Campbell, and my grandmother, Janet Campbell.
Currently Walter is a freshman at the College of Central Florida. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Crystal River Middle School-United Way partnership. Two familiar faces coming up here.
Good afternoon, school board members, Mr. Blocker, and Mr. Bradshaw. We just want to share with you this afternoon, this wonderful opportunity that our Crest River Middle School students are going to have, thanks to the United Way and Amy Neek. They have presented us with a grant, or they actually have a grant that they're going to use with our students, where we have a program that is starting October 7th, beginning of the second nine weeks, and it is called The Homework Diner. And we have targeted our level one, sixth grade, level one and two, sixth grade math students. And Amy actually came to us earlier this summer and just asked us about how the United Way could help our students be more successful with this grant that they had received. So, we will be offering on Tuesdays and Thursdays, from after school, about 2:35 until 5:00. And it's very, it's very unique in the, because of the fact that what they are doing is we are actually trying to involve parents, one important aspect of the United Way, was that they wanted to have parent involvement and try to foster those family relationships. So twice a week, the students will stay after school, and they are paying Crest River Middle School teachers to stay with the students. They will have a snack after school and some homework time with some assistants, so they can get their homework done before they go home. And then, for about an hour and 15 minutes, they will be with a teacher. We have, they're paying for us to have one teacher for 10 students, and we are starting off very small to begin with. We're starting with about 30 students, and then as we iron out cakes, then we're going to approach more students to join. But they will be working with a teacher, like you said, one for 10 students, and they will be doing, engaging math activities and other types of activities to help engage those kids in the importance of math, and that math is fun, and how to apply math to everyday life, so that we are hoping that we can increase those math skills. Along with that, that'll go until about 4:30, and then at 4:30, they actually will be going back to our cafeteria, and again, with this grant through United Way, the students will be fed a hot meal. So they will actually get dinner before they go home. And again, that's every Tuesday and Thursday. Once a month, though, to make sure that we include those parents, we are inviting parents in to join their children, and that was actually part of the application. They had to agree that they would come once a month to have dinner with their children, and have that family time, which a lot of them may not get a hot meal at home in the evening, or even sit down with a parent at home. And then the United Way is going to work with some different community organizations and have guest speakers to come and speak with the parents on, I don't know, and if you want to pipe in on some of the topics that we talked about, or you guys suggest, or I, you have to...
Thanks.
Different careers, we talked to a lady from, I don't know, I forget, but she actually talked about coming and showing them how to, the parents how to apply for FAS, so they could actually get some financial aid, so they could see the opportunities that they could have, that they may not have a clue on how to do. And what we talked about during that time was, after dinnertime, that once a month, when the guest speaker was there, talking more directly to the parent, the guest speaker is mainly to provide some resources for those parents. We talked about some other resources, like even just filling out how to get food, and...
Just additional assistance.
Right. So, so we would provide something for the kids to do during that half hour when the guest speaker is there speaking. But we're very excited about it. We actually sent, we invited 77 sixth grade students so far. We had 21 reply so far, and we know that midterms go out tomorrow, so we're expecting more, once midterms go home. But the parents, every single one of the parents on the application, they actually had a survey they had to fill out and answer some questions, and so did the kids, on just different aspects, about what their favorite subject is, what do they struggle with in school, so that we knew, you know, what areas that we need to focus on. But we are just very excited about this opportunity. We feel like our students have a lot of opportunity to get those reading skills every day in all their classes, because most of our teachers are going through reading endorsement, or have some of the reading endorsement classes, and we utilize a lot of reading strategies in all of our content areas, and math is in one area we don't get as much support in, so we're very excited about this opportunity, and we appreciate United Way's assistance very much.
Thank you. Do you have any, board, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Ms. Mead, can I just give you an opportunity too, to plug something that's going to be happening next week, and you could take advantage of both the audience as well as the board members?
Sure, I will for sure. But I do want to just recognize Mrs. Himmel, Mrs. Bishop, of course, Ms. Frederick, Roy Pistone, and Marilyn Farmer, who all were so helpful in getting this off the ground, and helping us to get the pricing, and get all of our numbers organized. So we really appreciate their help, and I want to recognize them. And of course, our United Way board for being bold enough to invest in a new project here in the community, to help children and families. But as board member Kennedy mentioned, next week, the United Way is rallying volunteer readers to read at Crest River Primary School and Floral City Elementary School on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. We need the most help over at Floral City. It's not quite part of everyone's daily path to run through Floral City. But if you are interested or available, please let me know. You can, Thomas has all my contact information. I'm pretty easy to track down. But thank you all very much for that opportunity, and you really have such a great team at Crest River and so many of the schools, but it's been such an honor and a pleasure to work with the team there at Crest River Middle. They really truly care about the students, and it's just exciting to be a part of something new. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. Ms. Mead, how many readings have you done? Because it seems like last year there was, I knew quite a few, and you've been...
Probably three or four a year for the last two or three years, so we're getting up there, but in multiple occasions, all of those. So it's fun, and the kids love it. The kids really love to see different people. My husband and I went together one time, and they asked us a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And board members, next Wednesday is the 17th, which is also Constitution Day, so if one of you, or any of you decide to read, that's also a great, and you incorporate on it, because it is Constitution Day. So, thank you very much. Okay, I believe we are moving on to business and sports services. Mr. Blockers, we have facility in construction. Mr. Burcock.
Good afternoon, school board members. I'm along the board. Here to request approval...
He looks like the muscle there, Alan.
Everybody needs a good guy. Everybody needs somebody to back them up.
There you go.
I'm here to request approval of the professional service agreement for Inverness Middle School kitchen renovation and remodeling.
Board members, we have a motion, then we can go into discussion.
I make a motion to approve the professional service agreement for Inverness Middle School kitchen renovation and remodeling.
I have a motion by Ms. Valford, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the professional service agreement for Inverness Middle School kitchen renovation and remodeling. Discussions, questions?
Yeah, I pulled this. I said to Alan, I said, "Gosh, don't we just do a breast milk school?" That was what, 15, 16, 17 years ago? 15.
Wow.
I remember Stanby going in and that little crew that was cleaning, because the school didn't open on time, because it wasn't quite ready, and everybody ready to clean and everything, and so I come saying, "Well, good, did that again." But Alan reminded me, this is more than just a kitchen, because I remember that kitchen was completely renovated, that's one of the new modernization, because all they had one, one time was a big, four-year time, big pot. That's all they had, remember that, Alan? Cooked in this big boiling, it was crazy. But this includes also the modernization and changing over of the cafeteria, so just tell us about that a little bit.
Yes, besides the kitchen, what we're going to do is the serving lines. That was a fabricated serving line made special for that, and we've had a hard time. We've had leakage in some of the pans underneath. So what we're going to do, and to make it easier too, because it's very hard for us to fill these serving lines, because kids come down both sides there, so what we have to do is, excuse me, excuse me, you have hot pans of food, and it can be a little bit dangerous, so we're going to make that, take that out of the equation when we have students come through, modernize a little bit more, make sure our flow of traffic is a whole lot more efficient. In addition, we'll be buying new cafeteria furniture for Inverness Middle School, so then I'll be proud to say, and I know Mr. Block would be happy to hear that too, we will then have outfitted every cafeteria in this county with brand-new cafeteria furniture, except for Central Ridge, because you all had already built that before I got here, so I'm sorry I didn't get to that one. But that's a heck of an accomplishment, in six years, to have outfitted 17 sites with brand-new cafeteria furniture. So with that modernization, and with Alan's help, get air conditioning in our kitchen there, because it is very difficult during the hot months here, and the ladies are just, you know, sweating, and just make it a whole lot more comfortable and make them feel a little bit better, so we're excited about it.
And for the audience, Mr. Pistone, how much Advaloren tax money was used to outfit those cafeterias?
Okay, again, none that would come out of food service, so we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Are you doing any of the other effects like we did at the high school with the themes and that sort of thing?
We have a package that we do at both the elementary, the middle, and the high, and basically at our elementary, we do a lot with signage, and we do some awnings over the entrance to and from the serving area. At the middle school, we have a theme package to where we try and get the students with a little bit of school pride. And what you might see at an Applebee's, or a Chili's or something, where they just put sports things on the walls, flags, and pictures and whatnot, what we've done is we've incorporated pictures of students, and we'll put a trumpet that we'll get from the school, an old trumpet, and we'll mount that to the wall, and then we'll put pictures of the students that are taking band. We'll put a basketball on it, and then we'll put students in action, and we change out these pictures throughout the year. Kids love to see themselves in action. And that's what we do at the middle school. At the high school, again, we build the food courts, so we outfit it that way. Supersai is probably the only one we really have not addressed right now regarding the food court. They have kind of a mock food court, it seems to work very well for them, but again, we outfitted them with brand-new cafeteria furniture last year, so they seem to be very happy with what we have going on.
That was a newer cafeteria than I had.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
About the inspection, the field inspection for one, every time the consultant goes to the school to prepare a field report, is that still what we do?
Yes, ma'am.
That was all we've been discussing, do other things that I'm concerned about, so okay.
Anything else, board members?
Thanks for being so thorough, I appreciate it.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Ms. Tammy?
Afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Blocker and Mr. Bradshaw. I first want to ask you to approve the disposal of the active surplus property.
And board members, again, if we can get a motion, then we'll go into discussion.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Valford, to approve disposal of active surplus property. Discussion?
Since I saw that I needed to call Mr. Getty, saying, "What is happening here?", so maybe you could clarify for us what's happening. You have listed what's disposed of, and what's happening to it, and what the credit's given, and that sort of thing, so...
And I'm going to differ to Dr. Getty's mostly. I know that we're surplusing the original iPads we bought for the one tool, and I'll let him...
Yes, after your call, I did look at that myself, and it does get your attention, so I'd like to give a little bit of explanation. Here we're buying iPads on the left hand and getting rid of them on the right hand.
And they're only about two years old?
In the third year, yeah. We discussed, when we talked about our most recent iPad purchase a number of months ago, turning in our, everything we bought since that very first batch, or what they call iPad with retina display, or fourth generation iPads, and so we discussed turning in the 300 to 400, because Apple would give us credit back for those. And so what you're seeing on that surplus list is those iPad 2s that we have gathered to turn back in for approximately $110, $120 each return on those.
And we paid 400?
Correct.
I still don't understand why after two years, we're raising them. Why wouldn't we just expand with students that don't have them, or won't have them this year?
We can do that. You know, one of the concerns we had initially was with iOS 7, the most recent version of the operating system, and we have determined that it works for most features on the iPad 2. Then of course, now iOS 8 is imminent, and it works, and it's supposed to work, we haven't seen it. There are a few little features that newest devices have that the iPad 2s don't, some of the features of the operating system. One, for example, comes to mind, it's called AirDrop, you know, it allows file sharing. But for the most part, they're usable devices, and if that's the desire of the war, certainly we can, we can do that. They will become obsolete, you know, quicker than the other devices we have out there just because of their age, so...
Dr. Getty, one of the things I remember you talking about when you were debating on whether to use to trade in or not had to do with the warranty, because these were out of warranty to trade again, or trying to maintain a warranty was an issue.
That is a very...
And there was a cost differential really to accomplish that.
That's a good observation, and it's a reality. So they definitely are out of warranty, and so any, you know, repairs are incumbent upon us. Typically, what the guideline we've used in my world for quite some time is, if the repair of that particular item costs more than 50% of the current value of that item, we don't think it's worthy of repair, and so...
You're like the auto insurance man.
What, really? I'm rolling the thumb, you know, I mean, what do you say, it's worth fixing? So, that's kind of the guideline we've used for audiences, visual equipment, a lot of other equipment over the years, and it seems to have worked pretty well. But certainly those could have a life, could have a purpose. I think there's 323 on the list, and the first observation I would make, I did not want you thinking there's one out the door to C Bay, or, you know, the warehouse, or the garbage, that's not true. We would, I estimate, get a return of about $35,500 to $38,700, depending on those that we turn in. So, that's why they're there.
But we paid $122,000 for them, at least that's what the purchase price list total looks like.
Sure, they were new, so...
Right, sure, they were new. So these were the ones that were used by the seventh graders at Citrus Springs?
Correct, and that were, our teachers and administrators had them at the time, mainly administrators, when they were doing the fast eat, walked through the very first batch that we got.
And wouldn't these be more applicable even to keep for elementary school? Are we doing one-on-one elementary yet? Because I know the districts are...
We have expanded to fifth grade this year, but you know, we've made accommodation, but certainly we can find a home for those devices if we want to, say, pretty much, we want to live with them, keep them, and discard them, you know, without any value, certainly we can do that.
What would be the life expectancy of an iPad?
I would say three, five years.
So these are only two years old?
Correct.
So they're not even halfway through their life?
Well, that's on a five-year cycle.
Well, and they're also in the hands of seventh graders, probably, possibly a lot.
But I will say very honestly, unlike when I come up here to discuss computer surplus, that stuff has no value to us, so I couldn't defend, and I can defend these iPads, I mean, in the event of having some usable life, so if it's your desire to keep that 300-plus, we'll certainly find a home for them, and get what life we can out of them, so...
Well, it depends on whether we need them, or whether we're going to continue spending another $120,000 to reach those things.
Every two years, do you see this as an every-two-years cycle of...
Every two years, do you see this as an every-two-year cycle of need?
Well, first of all, we're in like year three of a five-year, you know, one-to-one deployment. So in our capital forecasting and budgeting, planning, we do have purchases, you know, on down the road, years three, four, and five. But there will come a time where there's replacement cost, and, you know, things don't last forever.
You're just seeing this as every two years, we're going to be purchasing-
I wouldn't say every two years, but every, there'll be a cycle of purchase, just like there are with computers.
Right. And comparing Apple to any other product, they both are about the same-
All have similar lifestyle, life cycle, yeah.
I would think that, as a teacher, I'd want all of my children to have the same kind of whatever it is they have. You know what I'm saying? So I'd be careful when I do those out, if we do, if I keep them.
That's a good point. Really, the big difference right now is charging cords. Those use what, old 30-pin connector, which are still available, and the new ones use what's called a Lightning connector. It's much smaller. And that's a whole nother story. I tell you, in October, I believe, Mr. Clark, my realist leader, has suggested I do an overall one-to-one update for you at an October board meeting. So that's, I don't know if it's been determined for sure, but certainly in discussion. So I'll be able to give you a really better idea. But like I say, if that's a concern for anybody, it's deemed they have-
Can I ask you, looking at the fact that we're doing this now for a credit from Apple, if we chose to hang on to these for another year, how would that impact the opportunity?
Certainly, they would be less valuable.
Okay, so it's going to drop to 50%?
I don't have a problem with that.
And I would say too, the one question, and I don't have a problem however this board decides to go on this, but I would tell you, today there was a very large announcements by Apple. I would assume, within 30 days, most of the values of these will have dropped on this particular product to its lowest in history of resale value, just because of that, because the announcements have dramatically changed the iOS market. That doesn't change for this district, the usability of that iPad, which I think is what Mr. Edson is saying. But as far as trade-in value, it certainly will have an impact on that. So I think there is a little bit of, we either have to, you know, I would think, decide either to do this promptly, or we need to keep them. Because I think we're at that stage because of the announcement today. And again, I actually have no problem supporting, as I agree with Dr. Gettys on this, I think I could argue this both ways, very easily. The warranty is probably, to me, always going to be the issue. But having gone through this, seeing the challenges that we have, that's not going to change no matter what. That just happens to be a factor, not a decider in this particular decision.
Trade-in kind of came about, you know, when we began talking about our refresh over this particular school year, we were talking with Apple on leasing. And so as a natural part of that conversation, the trade-in piece came about. And so, once we determined maybe leasing wasn't in our best interest, that trade-in piece was still out there, you know, and available. So that's why we-
What would you do with these? If we were to keep these, what would you suggest?
I would find a, I would definitely find a home for them and a use. I mean, there's a big need out there. And thinking about elementary, one of the things you'll be hearing when we're doing a more detailed update, we're not really doing a take-home model in elementary school. And so, for example, our fifth grade, we're deploying the classroom sets of iPads. And so they're housed in carts for two reasons. One, security, and for a common place to charge them conveniently. So there's a little additional expense when we deploy them in an elementary school, simply for that, that purpose. And that may be $1,500 to $1,800 for a cart. But another example is, let's say a student has received a brand-new iPad with retina display, fourth generation, and they broke the screen for whatever reason. Maybe we could just say, okay, that screen broke, and we're going to work out, you know, a plan with you for payment, you know, if you can do that. But in the meantime, you could use this iPad too. So that might be a good logical use of those devices, so.
Have they been taken out of service already?
Yes, they have. They've been collected.
So you all plan to replace them no matter what?
No, they're still here. We plan to replace them in-
They haven't been redeployed.
Yeah, they haven't been redeployed.
What have the students who've used them last year, what have those students been given in?
The iPad with retina display, like everybody else has been given, so.
So what was the plan to do with these, then?
It's on the agenda. It's a surplus thing.
Well, I know it is now, but I'm sure this was in the works months ago. It didn't just come up yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, the question is, for this school year, you deployed brand-new iPads-
Correct.
-to students who had been using these. So you didn't intend to use these for the school year regardless?
Correct. No, we intended to turn them back, trade them in for some value. That's why they're on the agenda, so.
Okay. I guess my question is, how come, I would have thought that maybe we might have had this discussion earlier, so that we could have given the schools an opportunity to say, as we said in the past, we have surplus computers before we go out and scrap them for, you know, not 10 cents on the dollar, but whatever it is, you know. Do you, who is season eight, or give us some ideas of how we might use them? Maybe we send them off to class, or maybe we do give them to kids who have been abusive with them. I know there's plenty of parents, not plenty, but I know some parents who have said, I don't want my child having an iPad that they were going to break now.
Yeah. I tell you, if everybody's in agreement, I would like to rescind that as an agenda item. We're fine with that. And we'll find a home, and they'll be used, and that'll be fine.
I actually, I have to tell you, and I was, and I thought, two things. One, I thought we had a brief discussion, but I heard it. And again, I would have. So I want you to know that. So that's why I say, I knew what that conversation. But I will tell you, this conversation has got me thinking. I could think, I could think of about three or four different places where it could be used for the value of it. And I guess the answer to me is, again, furthering the expectations, furthering different things. I could even see, again, we've talked about providing to teachers a year in advance. I could see where those could be provided to next year's teachers already, so that they have a year of work with them.
Even if they're just used to help the, like, the third graders develop keyboarding skills, because fifth grade's a keyboarding concern?
I tell you what, with your profession, I'll come back in October with a great story on how-
So I do think that's it. So then, do this, do we just need to amend?
I just have a table.
No, I think there's other items. I think we just need to amend the iPads out with the initial motion.
Okay.
So I have-
Do you all agree with that?
I am. You've taught me into it. So Ms. Powers, if you would just amend yours, then?
I shall amend the motion to take the iPads out and to, where it must remain, with the items.
And I-
Balfour?
Yes, Ms. Balfour, I have a second. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve disposal of the active surplus property, but by amending the iPads to not be included on that list. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Excellent.
Next, I would like to ask you to approve the resolution for participation in the 2014-2015 Small School District Council Consortium.
Who's approval?
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Powers, I'm sorry, to approve the resolution for participation in the 2014-2015 Small School District Council Consortium. Discussion.
I believe, down in Tampa, the median, there's a discussion of differences in diversity and comparison of school districts and that sort of thing. And I was sitting there with the large districts on this particular panel, and I kept bringing up the fact that there's a big difference when students come from, say, an urban environment, and they come to a rural environment, that there are things they need to be aware of, things that are different, there are changes, that are sometimes even to them shocking. They don't expect to go downtown and go to a place where their cows are frightened. But there is a difference between urban and rural. And people I was talking to from large districts, I would just love to get used to it. So let them adapt. But there needs to be some teaching here, some recognition of the difference between urban and rural. And with that as a background, I was very pleased to know that there was a group of people with the small district council, they brought the districts together, and they talked about the common needs versus the needs of the larger district. Citrus County is so different from Miami-Dade. We need totally different things. We might be basically human beings the same, but the way we live our lives, the traffic, whatever you want to list, is very different. And with a small district community sitting together, talking about our commonalities, it was uplifting. It was positive. We could do some things together. And I always say, we could be David and Goliath. Goliath, Miami-Dade is certainly Goliath. And we're David, and we'll get our point made too. But it's because there are a group of us together, who are joined together to make this point. So that's why I support the small school district. And I hope that the other members of the board will join and ingratiate in having that commonality with the small school districts.
But this funny case, where, though, isn't the ability to get together and meet, we can do that under those auspices of FSBA, if we just have a committee of small schools and meet. This is a pay for the lobbyists that is employed by the small school district.
All right, who brings our point of view to the other piece?
Well, it's supposed to bring it to legislators. And as Mr. Kenny pointed out, reminded us passionately, as he was right to, because it was a very difficult situation. And he was the one who kind of carried the flag on that. They didn't help us at all. They actually didn't help us so much that we ended up losing money again. And we were greatly disappointed that they really dropped the ball and didn't support us. And so then why would we pay, if you have this relationship, that absolutely mentally didn't benefit us? It was a disaffection. That's what I can speak up.
It hurt us.
It hurt us. Thank you. On the other hand, though, I do see the value in the opportunity to come and join forces and meet, and to collaborate, and to share common concerns. And I also very big supportive of FSBA, because of what they bring to this people to us as far as training and all that. And this is part of their overall organization. And if we don't fund it, by angling, it doesn't exist. So I could go either way. But I certainly well understand your point, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I'd forgotten that whole scenario, but you were very involved with that, with representative Smith, and lots of phone calls, and lots of frustration, so.
And I definitely appreciate the feedback and the dialogue that's taken place. And because of your response at the last meeting with Mr. Shirley, the superintendent from Sumter, they gave the presentation, it gave me an incentive to find out more. And understanding that there was a discrepancy as far as services a couple of years ago, and there was an apparent ball dropped. Looking at the overall performance, it's been an organization established since 1983. I definitely recognize and respect and appreciate the perception of performance from the district's level. But when I ask for anything that's got a dollar attached, what is going to be the return on investment? And that's really the bottom line. What's the return on investment? And looking at the sparsity funding, that is something that is a focus of that organization. It is in state statute, however, it doesn't say in state statute that it has to be fully funded. So there is a goal for this organization to reach for that 100% funding. The technology funding that they were able to procure for us was something that was tangible, that I can say they reached a goal. Also, with relationship building, I definitely understand that and respect that. It's hard to put a monetary value on relationships, but I definitely, I see both sides. And I reached out to Representative Smith to get his perspective on it. And he feels, and I also feel that as board members, as elected officials representing, that it's part of our job description to go out and reach out to our legislators, and try to bridge that gap, and express our needs. Considering the fact that this organization's sole purpose is to represent the small districts, that focus has a value to me. And when I can look at dollars with a return on investment, with, for example, the technology funding, $154,000, that makes that commitment of $2,800 plus, a reasonable financial commitment to performance. I will say this, I do think it's imperative, anytime we give any kind of money for services, that we have clear expectations. So with that said, I'm looking at the history of performance, with the recent history being the most valuable to me. And I'm supporting it for that reason, with a sidebar asterisk, so to speak, that I would like to see something that we can hold this organization accountable for, whether it's going to representatives two times per session, something that we can have some dialogue. And that doesn't need to be a part of this motion at all. It can just be a dialogue to move forward. So with that said, you know, after talking, and talking, and thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it.
Mr. Blocker, I'd like for you to chime in on this, because you're the one that actually deals with the sparsity in particular, which is-
Before he does-
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bryant, go right ahead.
Before he does, I'd like to say that I'd like to have your attention.
It's a one-way, one-concentration, that's kind of-
Yeah, just so we all understand, we haven't been a member, I think, for three years. And we have received all the funding that we would have received if we were a member. When we were a member, when we had issues with the .25 critical capital, Millers at the board, by supermajority voted in, that counted against us as far as how they calculate sparsity. That's when we went to Mr. Dooland and tried to explain to him. We got nowhere, because keep in mind that if we get more money, all the other districts get less money. So he wasn't going to help, in my opinion, help one to then disbenefit others. So that was some issues that we had. And we actually changed the law the following year, so the critical capital did not get counted in our allocation for sparsity. So there's been some, I guess-
Credit taken, when credit isn't necessarily been due?
So I just say that we have not been a member. We have benefited from everything since that day. But that's certainly, we brought it for y'all to discuss after the last meeting. We didn't really bring it to say that we were asking for your approval. It's really for y'all to decide on how anymore to leave on this issue.
I think Ms. Bryant made the point that I think we have everyone's attention now. And if there was dropping of the ball in the past, I think the ball will be steadily in the hands of those who have it.
Well, I wish I could agree with you, but I have trouble when I read, and I believe this, Ms. Powers, is from their information. So I wanted you to understand, I didn't think that this was you that did type this up. But this is what continues to bother me. They say they were instrumental in the discussion, having to do the instructional materials review process. Well, I happen to have been in Tallahassee when that was going on. I happen to have been watching on a daily basis. It was the PTA. It was not the Small District Consortium that was instrumental in that discussion. In fact, I'm not even sure where the Small District Consortium was, because I certainly didn't see them in the committee rooms. I have trouble with the technology piece that they were saying, because again, I didn't see them in any of the committees lobbying for those issues. So I have concerns with their taking credit for that. I have an issue with the fact that they're talking about their clipping service, which is nothing more than what I get from Google Adverts, as being part of a benefit of them. This is a lobbyist that we are paying the $2,850 for. It is not Florida School Board Associations. I value the Florida School Board Associations. I was even told that since we were a small district, we were entitled to be a part of that, we just weren't entitled to the lobbying service of that. So I can't support this because it's bad enough, in my opinion, that we are hiring a lobbyist, which is what we're doing by being a part of this. But we are hiring a lobbyist that has worked against us. I am not going to support that. So if you are already, I am more than happy.
Can you please clarify what you can discuss?
When we asked for the sparsity adjustment based on that critical capital outlay, I think that's what he's referring to, Chairman Kennedy, as far as he didn't want to work to give us more money, because that would take money away from his other districts.
So he was more interested in the group than he was in Citrus County?
Well, I mean, that's a job we call it.
It is, but I don't have to hire him for it. As, certainly for Citrus County.
Right.
So I have no problem being a dissenting vote. I really have no problem with that. But I really have issue with this particular individual.
And just going back to the comment that you'd made, that you had not seen him in any meeting.
You show me a tape that shows him making that impact. I can tell you, I was watching many of those meetings- I can tell you, I was watching many of those meetings because we were very instrumental during that period of time. You know, this is saying that they were instrumental in the instructional materials review process. I did see Lane Blanton there. I did see PTA there. You know, again, and I think if you had conversations with our representative, which I believe, you will find that this lobbyist does not have a positive reputation up there. He's not somebody that people, you know, want to necessarily see coming in his door. And I just, you know, I think that Mr. Shirley, Superintendent Shirley, even kind of had some implications that whether that's working or not. We may have their attention, that's great, but I just, I can't in all conscience support this.
And sometimes I see it in the opposite manner because I see when we have meetings and ginger hair in them, that when the risk goes down and we possess different viewpoints, that there is an opposite impact. And I know a connection, Lane Blanton's a good connection. Information is brought to us, we're able to digest it, it's a small district. So I see the other side, apparently in different places at different times. But I like the way that small districts are supported in this matter.
And they've been effective in what? We have lobbyists in there, we have Lane Blanton's there, we have our FSBA representatives that continue to increase data and testing. They've not listened to us on a single issue. They've been rejected legislatively and everything that school boards have asked for. It's almost to the point where they're more judgmental because if they see them coming, they know what their issue is. And we know again, you take your same line. Lobbyists generally represent certain issues and try to argue for their clients' point of view. At some point though, they become, everybody becomes deaf to them because they're saying the same thing over and over again. And at some time they say, but I have to relate, I have to keep my relationship with legislators and so I have to ratchet it back because I want to maintain my relationship with them. So when I compete, I can go to there and I think we've gotten left out because of that. I have more issues than one, including the Saturday test that was a very big one where FSBA took a huge leap backwards to protect the relationship with the legislators. So...
Yeah, I think it's a different issue.
Well, it's the same issue. You're paying a lobbyist to represent us on what issue? It has to represent us as well as how many other, 25, 30 other school districts in the state of Florida? And our experience...
There's 37 that qualify and four of them are wealth adjusted out of the sparsity. So we've got really 33 members at this point. Looking at the history of, we've got Franklin, which is substantially poorer than our community. Nassau's never participated.
They don't participate.
They never, they're just not. It's not their philosophy. So, and I definitely respect the opinions of the fellow board members and looking at a 31-year commitment, also looking at House Representative Smith may not be in that role when we've got some changes taking place. Is there a value to this person that has 31 years of experience with connections in Tallahassee to educate the new legislators? Or do you see at this point, we need to get on the road?
Well, when we see, when we have here, it says, you know, the Florida, here it says the Small District Consortium constantly advocates for sparsity funding since 1983. I would gather to say that this board since 1983 has also said every time, we need more additional funding for students. Does that mean now that we're doing a great job? Because, I mean, to say that they've advocated, well, of course they advocated for it. They're not going to say that they didn't advocate for it. But what we know is, and again, what for me, we are here hiring a lobbyist. This to me is not, we are already a part of Florida School Board Association and I am pleased with that. I believe though that the Small District Consortium's cost is going towards the lobbyists. So for me, this is about hiring a lobbyist and I'm just not supporting that.
Then the thing that I think is really reckless with these lobbyists, and FSBA I think is also involved in this, is that we don't get alerts. You know, very well-run organizations like Fund Florida Now, they get alerts, email alerts. There's something on the floor, you've got to call the legislators right now. 500,000 people contacted legislators during the Parent Checker Act and were able to turn it back. That's action. That's what lobbyists should be doing besides advocating for your cause. They should be keeping you really at the moment's notice of what's important and essential. And we don't get anything from, what we get from small districts is after the fact. We have a news blurb, what happened yesterday? A little late.
Well, that's why I say it's less than Google word.
They have the same services and they're providing on a little limited and not real essential value to your bring home, other than you know, breakfast twice a year and you get the other tip off from small districts. Does that work 2,800 bucks?
Well, I think you're correct, you can send it, you should have alerts. And I know, I do call, I do ask questions. I ask, just to take the first one, what's going on? Tell us a bit about this person, this person, this person. So I have some information. So I initiate calls and ask questions and I do get answers from them. But I think you're correct in that we should have some alerts coming to us.
Which we are expecting. We're on the floor, they should be at all these committees, they should be attending every time that there's an education about...
That I agree with that. I think we need clear expectations.
And they don't tell anybody anything. We're all in the dark.
There's no Twitter that goes out. There's, I can tell you during legislative time, it is individuals in the conference rooms that I'm texting back and forth where I'm getting information. It's certainly not from the lobbyists.
They tell you, watch it on TV, boy, that was probably not...
I don't think it's a reasonable request, as you say, to say we need some information in these areas, send to us, we need alerts.
And I want you to know, I don't anticipate winning this argument. I really don't. I'm okay with that. I just have trouble supporting it.
Let me, I want to just go back to, again, back to my original question, what's the return on investment? And with the return on investment with the technology funding portion showing Citrus County has an increase of $154,000 because of that apparent influence from that organization? Would that have...
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Belfour, I just had trouble with that. Go ahead, keep going.
Would that have, and I go back to it for this reason, because I'm hearing consistently, we would get that anyway, we would get that anyway, we would get that anyway. So would we have gotten that 154 anyway? We would have. But if this organization was not representing all of the small districts, would that have happened? That's my question.
Well, I mean, I can't answer.
Right, I mean, the hypothetical.
Yeah, but I can just say that typically that comes about from, you know, legislators sponsoring a bill and putting it out there. And a lot of it had to do with getting a lot of these smaller districts way out in the outlier areas, some infrastructure to put in for, to take care of all this computer-based testing. So that's why the small school, I would assume, got involved because it was representing all their districts. But we would have got it. We were not a member, we still got it.
Well, and that's my concern, if this organization is procuring dollars that we benefit from and yet we're not paying our fair share as part of the relationship of the organization and supporting our other small districts with that, I hate for the other small districts to carry the burden and we sit back here and get the 154,000 without committing the 2,800. So, you know, I am torn. I definitely understand, I'm very goal-oriented, I want to see the bang for the buck and I want accountability. I definitely want that. I want clear expectations moving forward. He needs to see, or whoever it is, needs to go two times within a legislative session to each of our representatives. That's not much to ask. And with the social media today, we should have the updates and we should have a rundown of action taken before we are put in a position to have to vote to support.
Ms. Belfour, we're going to have to hold for a second. We have a five o'clock certain. We have a presentation by Citrus County Educational Foundation.
Thank you all for having me back. As you know, my name is Stephen Barbieri. I'm the executive director for the Citrus County Education Foundation. First and foremost, let me say congratulations, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Powers, Ms. Belfour on your reelections, and Mr. Dodd on your new service. And Ms. Deutschman, congratulations for the upcoming retirement.
Do smile, wouldn't they?
Next month I'll be back to do my quarterly update on the foundation and talk a little more about what's going on expenditure-wise and over $100,000 that we've already put aside and voted to education for this year. So I'll give you a little bit more about the money we'll be giving you all at next month's meeting, but for this month's meeting, I am here to talk a little bit about the coupons for Classroom Program that if you've read your paper lately or checked with the Chamber of Commerce or listened to local radio, you may have heard about the Coupons for Classroom Program. This is a district-wide fundraiser. It's going through every public school in Citrus County as well as, including Crest and the Academy of Environmental Sciences. So, starting on Friday, students will be sent home an order form with these books. Inside the Coupons for Classroom book is $20 to purchase. It has over $1,500 worth of coupons, 45 local businesses as well as 55 national brands. As you can see, it's a very nice, high-quality product. It is a partnership absolutely between the district and the Education Foundation. And I'd like to, first and foremost, thank the district, all the schools for getting on board with this. They've been great. They're all very excited. They will receive $6 per book sold, which goes up to $7 if they reach their sales goal. The remaining 12, which is either five or six, depending on what the school's cut is, goes to the Education Foundation, to our district-wide programs like MiniGrants, First Library, Avid, River Project, other things that we funded throughout the year. And the, so 12 on every $20 sold is staying right here in Citrus County, along with the great benefit of all the local businesses and the coupons in there. So we hope that all of you purchase it and I, as the Education Foundation, support all the schools. So I won't ask you to buy one on behalf of any particular school, but I do have someone here that may be partial to one school and may be looking to sell some books. So Logan, did you have anything you wanted to add? Go ahead, Logan, ask him. Thank you, Logan. I totally appreciate it. So you do have some available here today to purchase. In fact, the ones in your hands are not free.
Do you want to keep those in his pockets?
It will go through his school. So the $20 for all the books that we have today will be part of, they're part of Citrus Springs Elementary's books. So that share will be given to Citrus Springs Elementary and the rest will come to the district here. So if you'd like to purchase one today, please let me know. We'll be out in the lobby for a little while until...
Can I just give the money to Logan now?
Absolutely, Logan, she's got money for you, buddy, go get it.
Oh, wait, here it is.
You can help get the money too, so.
Oh, wait, you know what, Logan?
I've got a book.
You got a book already?
You gave me a book. Thank you, Logan.
Okay, I want two books.
Oh, give her an extra copy. Was there any questions about the program, the books?
Logan. So Stephen, there's a customer, this is giving...
Logan, the turkey cheese.
The business is totally donating the coupons.
Every vendor, every local merchant in that book is just 100% donated. It's, the minimum was, if I won't get one free or better to be in the book. The one sponsor that we really are appreciative of is, if you look at that back cover, Crystal Automotive stepped up in a big way and helped us fund the program from our end so that we're going to give away some great gifts to the students who do the best, including iPads, Nooks, $50 gift cards and things like that throughout the program as incentives. So with Crystal's help in this, we were able to cover 100% of our costs from a marketing and incentive standpoint. So every dollar that's raised by the sale of this book is going to come right back into the Education Foundation and local schools. We don't have to cut any of that out thanks to Crystal Automotive's support.
Can you get some change?
Oh, she wants five books.
Great sales price.
Give them that, give me some change.
I think the Education Foundation is doing so well. Bring the kids in, have the kids' children, it's going.
Steve, about how much do you think if you sell them all that the foundation is looking to generate?
Excellent question, Ms. Kennedy. Being a first-year program, we don't want to obviously get too optimistic or too pessimistic. But the company that we're using, Enjoy the City, is well-established in this area. We've met quite a few different companies, looked at the shares that they give and what they offer in terms of risk and non-risk. And Enjoy the City, the gentleman tag, Jacobson, who's been doing this for a long time, over 20 years, has pretty good, solid sales numbers. So he's projecting about a .6 as an obtainable number on the sell-through. So if we look at our total student body number, which is around 14,000 this year, times .6, that would be how many? Sweetie, can you just sit down, please? Thank you. That would be our projected sales numbers for total books on this year. So again, and then our share between the district and the schools is $12 per book. So we're expecting a good chunk of money on this one, but we don't want to, you know, put it in any budget or anything yet until the checks are cleared and all of that. But they will be on sale starting Friday at all of the schools in the district and continued on sale through October 3rd at the schools. And then the Education Foundation will have some extras available for the month following the end of the sales period. So if you don't get a chance to buy from the schools, you can buy for lots directly at that time.
I'd like to point out too, that the Windex Ead is good at Publix. And if you use all your Windex Ead, you've already paid for your book.
Yep, there's $20 worth of groceries off right there. So the very first coupon, if you let people know, they get their $20 right back there. So really they're just making a great donation to Citrus County schools. That's going to cost them nothing and going to end up maybe saving them $1,500 or more dollars in the long run. So it's a win-win for local businesses, for people who purchase the books, and most importantly for us here in this room, for the school district.
I like the free coupons for the World of Farm. We haven't been there in years.
Well, you can have your next birthday party there for half hour.
Steve, before you leave, we had a couple of items this year that we had asked the Educational Foundation for help on and we didn't really get it. Could you maybe explain, maybe, you know, I'm thinking of Avid Tutors, that being one, it's really been a very important program to us. And I guess we didn't quite understand that.
Sure, absolutely. And that's what my quarterly update is next month, to just go over sort of line item, the requests that we received and what we were able to fund. Realistically, as you all did and you're voting on here shortly with your budget concerns, it became really an analysis of what we had available and what we were able to fund versus had to hold off on funding. With the Avid, that was quite a significant expenditure, I believe, a little over $45,000 was requested for that. Right now, our entire budget that we have in unrestricted funds is right around $90,000. And as all of you know, we have an annual mini-grant program this year. We're giving $60,000 away in November to that. And that's something we've done every year as an ongoing commitment to the teachers in this district. So right there, needing $60,000 to spend over the next month and a half, if we'd have spent that 35 or 45, excuse me, on Avid, we would be negative $10,000 on our current budget. So a lot of the items just came down to that sort of questions. You know, if we could fund everything, absolutely, we would love to. And over the last few years, we have been able to fund more than was ever available in the past. And as I said, we've already, we're already over $100,000 for just, what, a month into school now in terms of what we've designated as expenses here in the first month. So we're already over what we normally spend, but unfortunately, the request from the district this year went from 44,000 last year to about 160,000 this year. So it was quite a jump for us and it just simply wasn't in our budget on quite a few items. So we'll continue to work with the district and with Ms. Bryant who's on our board, Ms. Simmel who's on our board, and all the employees here to help try to get as many things funded as we can.
I appreciate it. And we do appreciate, because you do regularly give out checks everywhere you go. And again, SAC, I was very appreciative of what you did with the mini-grants to the SACs because it really got the SACs talking the way, you know, Ms. Deutschman and I have, you know, remembered those years of being able to have parents involved in curriculum decisions. decisions, and so you brought that back a little bit for us last year.
Well, we're glad we could do anything to help out, but that's what we're here for. So thank you all, and I'll see you again next month.
Thank you.
I just want to...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, like, I'm a school board member, you should always like cash.
Over, I'll get him before you.
Thank you. Okay, we will go back to small district consortium, and the only thing I was going to, and I'll give it back to Ms. Balfour here, but one of the things that I, I noticed that when it came to the digital classroom, I, I don't know, I would take exception to say that I think we wouldn't have gotten it. I think we may have gotten more, because one of my concerns has been, is that we're a district that has been moving at a better pace and doing more for technology, but we actually didn't get the funds because there was an in-need issue that was put onto that. So because we've been good stewards with our money, we didn't get as much money funded back to us. So where were they when we needed that? So I, I'm not sure that we wouldn't have gotten more money.
Is there communication, since we are part of this organization or we are categorically part of it, is there communication from our side of the fence reaching out saying, this is what we expect of you?
We fired him, so I wasn't communicating with him. We fired him three years ago.
Okay. And what's your...
There was communication sometimes. I think that we need to put on ourselves the responsibility, also communicate, communicate as the two ways three. If we have needs, we express those needs. We expect people to guess what we need. We need to communicate, but I think that this has shown us that we need to say more, do more in terms of that.
We shouldn't be punished because we're ahead of current.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Well, I tell you what the missing link here is, as far as being able to make a clean decision that's defendable, is the gentleman responsible for this organization. You know, I, I'm hearing soundbites that he wasn't seen at any meeting, and yet he's not here to defend the organization's stance, and yet I'm getting concrete evidence to support that there was meaningful dialogue that took place to give us a return on investment that is tangible, $154,000, instead of the what-ifs. If we didn't have that representation, we may have gotten more. It's a, it's hands and bucks, and it's hard to make a valid decision that's defendable with that kind of information.
He's in Dixon County right now, opening a new school. I don't know if he decided to call back.
Again, I think this, you know, if you wanna support a lobbyist, that's fine. I'm not gonna support a lobbyist on this. That's just the bottom line. And, you know, he supports more than just school board associations. He lobbies for law enforcement, he lobbies for fire departments.
And Ajax instruction.
Those are, those are all other entities. Again, his job is to be a lobbyist. Does he run into legislators? I'm sure he'll tell you, he runs into them numerous times a day and has, has meaningful dialogue in which he includes. We can all take credit for input and saying that, that we were a part of it. I, I think that the most important thing is what you did is to talk to your legislators to say that, that that person made a meaningful difference in a decision they made. I don't believe that that's the feedback I've gotten.
Can I call for the vote?
Please do.
Call for the vote, do you have to vote or call for the vote?
Yes. All those in favor for calling for the vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have, did you, I'm sorry, Ms. Balfour, you...
No, I haven't voted.
Okay. That's, that's a, it's a four-one note, call for the vote.
You got the ayes, they gave, with the, with the information that I have right now.
We called for the vote. We voted to vote, so now we vote.
All right, now, we've called for the vote, so now the question is, we're gonna just move forward.
Well, I'm not, I'm not arguing. I'm not arguing.
Okay. I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Fails, three to two. Okay?
Next, I ask to approve budget amendment number 11. We're amending the final June 2014 budget amendments. For the most part, this is just cleanup, so that when we do the annual financial report, all our budgets in place. The biggest changes are the increase in the tax revenue due to Duke settling and paying their back taxes. So, any other questions?
Now, what into capital, correct?
No, no ma'am. We have, some of it went into general and some of it went into capital.
We had to repay, we had to repay for the, for our funding that they brought back up to our equitable funding.
Right, they had to, they reduced the FFP distribution, so...
The FFP was reduced from the state in concert with Du paying the...
Right.
And this is the, the final payment for the 2014 year.
If anyone wants to entertain a, put a motion forward?
Okay, I'm approval of the budget amendment number 11.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve budget amendment number 11, amended June 2014. Any more discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Next, I ask you to approve the 2013-2014 annual financial report. If you wanna take a look at the ESC 348, which is the smaller packet you received, there was one small change on the self-insurance fund. The final fund balance went down about $250,000 because we had to book some accruals based on the lag report we received from Blue Cross. And if you look on the third page, the net change in our fund balance this year was only $285,000, which is quite an improvement over last year, which was a couple million. So I think we've done a good job.
Kenny, I'm not finding my short one right now. I will find it here in a second, but I remembered that some of the things that I had highlighted had to do with Race to the Top. There was still some funding in that, and that was carryover from the last, what, four or five years?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the last year.
The last year. So they continue to fund it, or they, or this is just, we have some big lump sum and...
We asked for a one-year extension to, to use for a couple of different categories and rooms to within HR and testing and evaluations.
It wasn't that we got additional funding, it was just we got an, an extra year to complete using our funding.
And then I know that we had a discussion about some of the things that we had to, people, we had to hire things and we had to do to comply with Race to the Top, that were going to be relatively ungone, no longer funded by this.
One in particular, and that's what we talked about previously in the budget, we had to take on the funding for one of the IS personnel. That was previously funded up Race to the Top, and we had to assume all the funding this year disposition. That's the only position that I think I know that we had to take on.
And then what are we gonna, all right, so what else is, are we encumbered to do anything else in the future with Race to the Top? Do we have classes in late?
I could defer to Mr. Clodder.
What did we get out of Race to the Top? I know the answer, but it was a lot of money.
It was $1.9 billion. That was the only position that actually was funded on that four-year stint. We're actually, in year five, we've extended into two project areas. One for higher academic courses, which was finishing up our biomedical courses at the Crest River. But I can, I can break it down. I think I've shared with you in the past, it paid for a lot of the wireless access that we have at all of our schools. We've done a lot of different things, and we basically had 13 projects that we've actually sparse down on.
Remember, there was gonna be a lot of accounting, that was gonna be probably troublesome.
It'll be cool.
Yeah.
It's a non-spendable fund balance, non-spendable.
That would be our inventories, what's in the warehouse, the food service inventories that they have. It also includes anything that we have prepaid, things that are, that were for the 14, 15 fiscal year, like site licenses or textbooks, things like that, that we can't spend that because we've already spent it. So it's mostly our inventory, though.
Inventory, you can't expense it to actually use it.
Right. And I'm sure the debt service, you can explain this to me quickly, but I, I'm seeing at the bottom of the excess deficiencies over revenues, there's a minus $5.6 billion in a year. You wanna see a minus in the bottom?
The revenues from the capital transfer in, the debt service has no...
It has a zero.
Right, and this can't blow out?
Yes.
Do, do we do that at, before we close out this general ledger, or...
Well, I think it's just recorded.
The transfer? The transfer we do when we make the payment. I mean, we're going to make the payment. We have one due the 15th of this month, and we have one due April. So as soon as we make the payment, we do the entry to transfer the money at the same time.
Which, April of 15 will be the last payment on Crest River.
On the special way to food services, I was looking at the school lunch reimbursement, the school breakfast reimbursement. It looks like the breakfast is about a third of the lunch, the way it goes.
Probably accurate, because not as many kids eat breakfast as they do lunch.
Yes.
Right, so it's about a third, but that's, to me, that's a lot. And how many students eat breakfast?
It is, yes.
If you look, I believe, about a certain page it is, but once again, food service is carrying a very healthy surplus that we will, we will start developing a plan to how to bring down some of that funding, and that's when you put it at cafeteria tables and do some...
That's on page five. Any other questions?
I don't think, do we have a motion on this one? I don't have it written down. No. We need a motion, then?
Okay, I'll...
Yes.
I'm gonna refer to the 2013-2014 annual financial report.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the 2013-2014 annual financial report. Any more discussion? Oh, go ahead.
Of the redemption of principal.
On the debt service?
Yes.
Is that matured?
Yeah, debt service.
That's the payment for the Crest River primary bond. We're paying the, we're paying the principal on that one, the Crest River High one, we won't pay till the, we'll pay the whole $35 million at the final payment.
And I have a, a, a mark, two questions, others. So a little of that.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Lastly, I asked you to approve the authorization for us to proceed with an issuance of a TAN and for PFM to issue the bank loan RFP on behalf of the district.
I move to approve the authorization of staff to proceed to issue the TAN and PFM to issue a bank loan RFP on behalf of the district.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the authorization of staff to proceed with insurance of a TAN and for a PFM to issue a bank loan RFP on behalf of the district. Any discussion?
Yes, like, any town have all these different acronyms?
Yes.
This is very, this is the same as last year. We've been looking at issuing...
Like a sheet of paper or something.
A TAN is a tax anticipation.
I was gonna call you, that's all.
That's the vehicle we use to do the borrowing in that window of time when we, we haven't got our tax revenue, so to make, get that for the cash flow. PFM, Public Financial Management, is the financial advisor that we use, and RFP, of course, is Request for Proposal. So they've already got a timeline, the agenda, ready to go. If this is approved tonight for us to proceed, they'll put it out to the banks tomorrow, and then they'll do their bidding, so to speak, based on the resolutions and the information out there. And then we would come back to the board meeting in October for you to approve for a close somewhere on or before October 31st.
I wonder if y'all have, have a chance, if we would, for the need to act, because I know most of them were explained as you read on, and yet, but some of them aren't, so, and you have to call to find out, and you know we're gonna call, so I'm not gonna let it come by, so, just so you don't bother all the time with the same.
Kenny, I recall that last year when we asked for this, it was based on the issue of Duke not paying their taxes.
Right.
And so we had an anticipated shortfall, but Duke issue's been resolved, so why are we having anticipated shortfall issues?
We're currently cash flow. We're still looking at our cash flow needs. And if you look, we did the cash flow analysis, you know, in these months that we're not receiving our tax revenue, it's in the, in a deficit, almost in the area of a little over $10 million. Now, we can do some transfers with them, some investments, but actually, you really don't wanna go out and take your investments away, that then fund the cash flow. You could do a short-term note like this is, at a much cheaper price, to be able to fund your deficit during these lean part times.
Why didn't we do that before?
Well, before, we had a much higher fund balance. Remember, we had 2.0 capital we were bringing, we had, we had a lot more money, and now we don't have the, the benefit of having all that cash on hand where we have to do this, you know. Eventually, I would hope to get back in a cycle where you don't have to do it.
That right there is the sales pitch for holding that reserve.
How much is it gonna cost us overall?
Well, last year, all-in cost was probably about $50,000. That included your interests and all the fees. Of course, we haven't bid it out yet, so that's gonna be. So last year, we, we got it at about, at about 42 basis points was the interest rate.
And how much should we borrow?
$10 million.
And how much do you, like, if we were gonna borrow this year?
Up to $10 million again, yeah, same thing.
So until we get an additional $10 million in our reserves, which is an awful lot.
Well, you know, remember capital, we used to raise, we used to bring in like about $25 million in capital, and now we're bringing in like $12.
Borrowing capital for that purpose?
You can borrow, yes. You can do inter-fund transfers, as long as you pay it back within that year. It, it's a safety net. And I've already shared some of the graph resolutions from Mr. Bradshaw, so...
We should save $122,000 to our pants.
At $28.50 with small schools.
They kept those times from being worn out.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. We might be able to sneak in the golden rod.
I'm here to ask approval for the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the golden rod.
I make a motion to approve it, the instructional positions outlined in the golden rod. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve instructional and support recommendations. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good, she's not here, so I can, I just was gonna say you're not here, so I was gonna go ahead and go to public comment. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. That's right, that's four, that's 5:45.
Five, so there's a couple of places.
Yeah. Do you think we can start? Yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and suspend the regular meeting and open the public hearing. We are going to talk about two different policies. I'm sorry. Oh, we're doing the budget, that's right, I'm sorry. So Mr. Dixon, if you'd like to go ahead and present policy 8.36.
Yes, sir. This policy, 8.36, is transporting students in private vehicles. The proposed revision adds Section 4B related to following Florida statutes, including the ban on texting while driving, and it adds Citation 316.305. So there's only one change, and it just basically lifts out the requirements not to text while driving. Glad to answer any questions.
Okay, is that a law for everybody in the state of Florida?
Yes, ma'am.
So why are we doing it?
I think we're doing it just to make sure it's in policy, so that it's clear that when they look at the policy manual, that it's pulled out.
And I, I know when I was reading, I was thinking, I was thinking about the children, the small children, the loose receipts, and that does all apply there, but I think what we have to follow is the stated law, and it doesn't have anything about loose receipts, and we need that for a second.
We still have to follow the law, the statutes, even though it's not lifted out in policy, but I think the reason this is lifted out is because it's a relatively new thing, and just to make sure that it's clear. And the other policy had to do with buses, cooperating buses, and it was also lifted out in that policy.
So, 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 you know, private vehicle, and we normally have a loose receipt in there, would that apply? Is that, right?
Well, I would say that they're gonna have to put, put, climb it up for a lot of this first.
So it would? So, would.
Yes, but I think what this is different is that we allow students instead of having a place on a bus or a district-operated vehicle, replacing the front of your vehicle, to make sure that they're compliant with the policy and also with actually the law, which I think that's also a bus driver's policy, and that's just making sure.
It shows in system size, not on the.
Doesn't have a.
Need to open this up for public input, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm asking anyone to come forward to give public input on policy 8.36, transporting students in private vehicles. Anyone wishing to come forward on policy 8.36? Last call. Board members, any questions? Okay, then I just need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the revision of policy 8.36, transporting students in private vehicles.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve the revisions to policy 8.36, transporting students in private vehicles. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Do I just go to the script thing? We've called the meeting to order, so the purpose of this meeting is to adopt the final millage rate for, and the five-year work plan and the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. Millage rates are 5.8040, which includes .0390 prior period adjustment for operating purposes, and 1.500 for capital outlay purchases, or a total of 7.3040 mils. The final budget for the fiscal year 2014-2015 totals, this one's, I can't work with me, Is there anyone here wishing to address the board as to the millage levy for the five-year work plan or the budget purpose proposed for the 2014-2015 school year? Anyone wishing to come forward on the budget proposal or the five-year work plan? Last call for public input. Is there a motion to include supplemental millage rate of .748 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.50 mils in the resolution determining revenues and millages levy as required by law?
I would include the supplemental millage rate of .748 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.50 mils in the resolution determining revenues and millages levy as required by law.
Second.
Ms. Powers moved, and Ms. Deutschman seconded the motion to include the supplemental millage rate of .748 mils and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.50 mils in the resolution determining revenues and the millage levy as required by law. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Resolution has the District School Board of Citrus County, Florida, determining the amount of revenues to be produced and the millage to be levied for the general fund, for the district local capital improvement fund, and for district debt service funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015. Whereas, Section 1011.04 Florida statutes require that upon receipt of the certificate of the property appraiser, given the assessed valuation of the county and of each of the special tax school districts, the school board shall determine by resolution the amounts necessary to be raised for current operating purposes and for debt service funds and the millage to be levied for each such fund, including the voted millage. And whereas, Section 1011.71 Florida statutes provide for the amounts necessary to be raised for local capital improvement outlay and the millage to be levied. And whereas, the certificate of the property appraiser has been received, therefore be it resolved by the district school board, that the amounts necessary to be raised, as shown by the officially adopted budget, and the millages necessary to be levied for each school fund for the district for the fiscal year are as follows. Number one, district school tax, non-voted levy. Certified taxable value, $8,575,272,129. Description of levy, required local effort amount to be raised, $41,296,439. Millage levy, 5.0170 mils. Prior period funding adjustment millage, $321,21. Millage levy, 0.0390 mils. Total millage, total required millage, $41,617,460. Millage levy, 5.0560 mils. Number two, district school tax discretionary millage, non-voted levy. Certified taxable value, $8,574,272,129, excuse me, $129. Description of levy, discretionary operating. Amount to be raised, $6,159,014. Amount millage levy, 0.7480 mils. Number three, district school tax additional millage, voted levy. That would be none.
May I add the $6,157?
Oh, I apologize. On number two, under district school tax discretionary millage, the amount to be raised is $6,157,014. Number four, district local capital improvement tax, non-voted levy. Certified taxable value, $8,574,272,129. Description of levy, local capital improvement. Amount to be raised, $12,346,952. Millage levy, 1.500 mils. Number five, district debt service is zero. Number six, the total millage rate to be levied is less than the rollback rate computed pursuant to Section 200.065, per N1 closed per N Florida statute by 4.05%.
Having heard the resolution, is there a motion on the floor? Oh, sorry, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Is there a motion to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year?
I move to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
Second.
They motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to adopt the motion for the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt and adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Is there a motion to adopt the final proposed budget as the final proposed, I'm sorry, as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year?
I move to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to the motion to adopt the final proposed budget as the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to be adopted as the final budget, adopt the final budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
A resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2014-2015, whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapters 201011 Florida statutes, approve final millage rates, final five-year work plan, and final budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015. And whereas, the School Board of Citrus County set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2014-2015. And whereas, at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the final millage rates, final five-year work plan, and the final budget in the amount of $211,180,179 for fiscal year 2014-2015. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County, including the millage rates set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as the final budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1, 2014, to June 30, 2015.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the final budget?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. I second the motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, on the motion to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. I will go ahead then and adjourn the hearing, I'm sorry, the public hearing, and I will reopen then the meeting. I'm sorry, was there anything?
Just say thank you. Ms. Deutschman, thank you. This is the last budget you get to.
It is. It's just going to be the oddity with the green card next time.
Board members, if you're okay with it, let's just take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back into public comment.